Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, everyone is in.
All right, let's just take a look. Okay, thanks for your patience, everyone. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called to order, may we have roll call please?
Chair Holland?
Yes?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Present.
Commissioner Friedman? Commissioner Mayby?
Present.
Commissioner Newt?
Present.
First on our agenda is our public comment, please be reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has control jurisdiction, supervision and advisory power, please state your name and address and also because runs soon, please put your the hand up emoji or state your name. And go from there, you can also put your name in the chat, that helps. Any public comment? Oh, I see, go ahead Lauren.
Thank you, I just had a comment tonight, my name is Lauren Dalzell, I live at 1120 East Clark Street. I'm here to request that our Yellowstone Ben proposal for ARPA funds be placed on the December 1st City Commission Agenda, our county commission granted ARPA funds on September 14th to several of our community projects, two of those, the Miles and the Sherwood will require matching funds from the city, the county funds were granted on the basis of three qualifying expenditure categories, 2.2 household assistance specifically rent, mortgage and utility aid, 2.10 aid to nonprofit organizations, 3.10 housing support specifically affordable housing, we look forward to sharing these exciting projects with you on December 1st.
All right, thank you Lauren, commissioners if looking at that in the near future, if anyone wants to request for it to be on the agenda, please do that and then ask for a second. Right, thank you Lauren. Great, any other public comments?
Chair Holland?
Yeah?
Were you making that request of the commission now or during commissioner comments at the end?
It can be through an email, I would have to look a little deeper into that request personally, could be through an email or at the end, as we usually do.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, I see no other hands, Faith, anyone else? Is Faith there? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on then to our consent items, we have six consent items A through F. Do we have a motion from the commission on consent items A through F or any that you would like pulled for consideration or discussion?
Um, I make a motion approved consent items A, B, C and D and I'd like to make comments on ENF.
Okay, so do we have, or do we have a second on consent items A through D?
A second.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Newt's, roll call please.
Chair Holland?
Yes?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Friedman? Oh, he must have to rejoin us, Commissioner Mayby?
Four.
Commissioner Newt?
Four.
Motion passes, we have consent items ENF that were pulled for discussion, Quentin, you want to start with that?
Yes, I just publicly want to recognize Sarah Boyle being appointed to the tree board. She has a nice resume and it's, I just, I'm wanting to recognize these people as they fill these roles on these volunteer boards and also Michael DeChellis for reappointment, the conservation board, he's done an outstanding job and just want to say thank you to those two. Other than that, otherwise I would I yield.
All right, thank you, yeah, agreed, thank you, we love to talk about some of these recommendations on occasion and we try to because they're important parts of our community and important parts of what boards are an important part of what we do as a commission and the feedback that they give us, we use and utilize in our decisions. So agreed Quentin.
Can I, can I just ask a quick question, were these all the applications that were submitted?
Yes.
Did I hear somebody say yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks. That's helpful, I, I don't have any other comments, I was just curious since the application rate ebbs and flows for our boards and I, yeah, thanks, thanks to everybody for applying and wanting to serve.
I know Parks and Trails is in the process as well of interviewing and should have a recommendation coming up as well. All right, do we have a motion then on consent items ENF?
I make a motion to approve consent items ENF and also that I had cut my video because I keep getting kicked off, same thing last night, so I'm here, you can't see me, not that much looked at anyway.
All right, thank you. And is that okay, I think for not to be seen, maybe we can try to get Quentin on on occasion, I recall there being some directive from the state.
Okay.
Anyone?
I can answer that if you would like, it's generally required that the public be able to see your deliberations, although we do have an internal policy that allows for some change to that, if there are certain problems. If Commissioner Schwartz can stay on video, that would be great, if not, if he's having a technical difficulty, it's more important than he participate than that he be seen since everybody can see the rest of you.
And I know that we have a, you know, call in feature that are part to our commission protocols that we've approved, so that in a sense is a call in. All right, okay, thanks, okay, we have a motion I guess from Quentin and do we have a second on those two consent items? All right, we have motion by Schwartz and a second by Maybe, roll call please.
Chair Holland?
Yes?
Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner Friedman? Commissioner Mayby?
Four.
Commissioner Newt?
Four.
Motion passes. Are we getting Mel back on?
Fisher, back on.
Okay, he looks frozen as well, or no, okay. All right. Moving on to, or tonight we have no proclamation, so we have no scheduled public comment, we have three public hearings, ordinance number 3021 and ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston Montana amending Article 4, Chapter 30 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled zoning as it pertains to building design standards, Mr. Cardus.
Thank you Madam Chair, so this is, all the public hearings are second readings and will become effective in 30 days if passed this evening, so this falls into that category, this is the building design standards which would apply to the overlay zoning areas as well as the large scale retail areas, so those are the areas affected by these building standards, if you leave through them, they mainly deal with those kind of things, signs, what exteriors would look like, scale of the buildings for the, for the overlay zone, basically it is a design standard to make sure that the areas with the overlay are built mainly cosmetically to the way we want them to look, this does not change any current requirements except for areas that have the overlay zone which are just a couple, but in the future we would then place these overlay zones in the areas that we wanted them to take effect, probably in the entrance, entrances to the city is, is the most likely area, but that will be a future, future action that will come before the commission, right now this is just establishing the design standards.
Thank you, thanks, thanks for the information, any clarifying questions before we open it to public comment?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Go ahead Melissa.
So it sounds like the, just to make sure I understand, like the design overlay map that we've gone through with numerous planning boards at this time would probably be the starting point for implementation, is that right?
That certainly could be one of the first places we look as areas that were, that were designated for design overlay, what we at one time called the gateway overlay zone, but we would look at those, that would go through the planning board and then come back up to the commission for approval and it would go through the same process of amending the ordinance to place that overlay in the areas that were deemed appropriate.
And then
Point of clarification on that, it will go through the zoning commission, not the planning board as it is a zoning map amendment, so it's a zoning commission.
Thank you, and then my other question is, is this like an administrative, since there's no subdivision review process typically, right, for these types of projects, is this is like an administrative process with the developer and city staff?
It is, it would probably be, it would probably be included in the site plan review or if that's not necessary, this would be just another review that the building and planning department would have to accomplish on any new development.
So if this were to be voted through, it sounds like there'd be a zone update, a zoning update, is there any other things that would need to be updated?
Not as far as this overlay goes, these are the standards that would apply, so the only thing left would be to designate where those standards apply, so it would just be a text amended to say where this overlay is active, could be across any of the current zones, but it would lay over top of it and then these, this design standards would be required.
Thanks, I yield.
Thank you, any other clarifying questions? Okay, any public comment on ordinance 3021, I think, sorry, 3021? Oh, I forgot, actually I forgot to open the public hearing, sorry. Getting my phone gavel. This public hearing is now open on ordinance 3021. Any public comment? I don't see any hands. Okay. There's no public comment, this public hearing is now closed. Commissioners? Go ahead, any comments or questions? Melissa, go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is, this looks really great, I think this is something that planning boards in Livingston have been working on for a really long time and I'm really excited to see this coming before us along with all of the other topics that zoning and the planning department have brought to us, so thank you for your work on it, Matthew and previous planning boards.
Thank you Melissa. Yeah, I stated this last time, this is a long time coming, I think that many boards have worked hard to try come and get in front of, I should say, this issue and I think the work is amazing and great and Matthew, we appreciate your expertise on this as well, I'm excited to be a part of this decision. Anyone else? Okay. No one else, all right, I don't know who's frozen or not, so let's start with the motion, we have a motion on ordinance 3021.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 3021.
Second.
We have a motion by Newt and a second by Friedman, roll call please.
Chair Holland?
Yes?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Friedman?
Four.
Commissioner Mayby?
Four.
Commissioner Newt?
Four.
Motion passes. Next ordinance is ordinance 3022. If I'm gonna shift here, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana amending section 30.13 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled official zoning map of the City of Livingston by zoning the parcels including the property between North O Street and the Yellowstone River to include the KPRK radio station as medium density. Residential R2 and neighborhood commercial and to include the area zoned neighborhood commercial in the design review overlay zone, Mr. Cardus.
Thank you Madam Chair, so this is again the second reading of this and will become effective in 30 days if passed by the commission, you can see on the graphic here, the area we're talking about is from RX Coffee out through KPRK back to the, what used to be the, the city county line, which is a, a section line there, basically the first block from Park Street south is, we'll call it railroad south, is to be zoned neighborhood commercial and then what would be the second block back is to be zoned R2, so those were the designations that we talked about earlier, as a reminder, we did talk about that this is, we really would like this to be mixed use and so once a mixed use is owning district is created that we'll probably come back and relook at this for zoning to mixed use instead of neighborhood commercial, but for now neighborhood commercial was as close as we could get, this is a recommendation from the zoning commission.
Thank you, any clarifying questions before we open the public hearing?
I would like to ask a, just a quick question, I think, I think the city managers talked about this before but just to reiterate since it's been a while, can, I know some folks are gonna have concerns or already have concerns about development on lands that are potentially impacted by the plume or historic, you know, industrial pollution, can you speak a little bit to just those concerns and what zoning means on that land?
Sure, so actually, the zoning will, well, the fact that it's been annexed is beneficial in that area because now the city has more regulations in that area than there were prior, obviously, basically when it was in the county, anything could be built that wasn't against state or federal regulations, however, in that particular area, there really is no area, the plume has, has receded significantly from that area and should not be a problem in that particular area, and even if there were some residual, the fact that now that city water and sewer are available to the residents in there, solve any problems as far as water contamination goes for drinking water or, or home use water, that will now be part of the city system, so it will not come from that area, it will come from the city wells and other areas, so contamination is also not a problem as far as that goes. Along with contamination, I know there's some, some concerns about proximity to the river and flooding, again, that will be controlled through federal flood plan regulations and any other state or federal requirements as far as setbacks from the river or just building in the hundred or 500 year flood plan.
Melissa, is that enough?
I think so, um. I was just thinking, I wonder if there's, and you probably wouldn't know this, Michael, maybe you would, sometimes there's also like different opportunities for development like grants and things available for redevelopment of lands as they're being reclaimed by cities, so I don't know if that's relevant here, if the plume has receded, but it certainly has happened in other Montana towns.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything specific for this project, however, there are some structures in there that probably would qualify for brownfield or other grant programs based on their current condition, so there certainly are some opportunities to rehab some of the, some of the buildings in that area.
Thank you so much, I yield.
All right, thank you, let's open this public hearing. This public hearing on ordinance number 2023, 22, sorry, is now open, any public comment? Any comment? I don't see any hands up. Okay. Don't want to miss anyone.
Could I ask a question regarding?
Yeah, I'll just close the public hearing, Warren, and then go ahead, okay?
Sure.
This public hearing is now closed on ordinance number 2022, 3022. Go ahead, Warren or commissioners?
This I guess would be Matthew's area, what would be the definition of medium density, R2 in, in that region?
So R2 allows one dwelling unit and one accessory dwelling unit for 3,500 square feet, which is basically the historic size of a city lot, so basically one dwelling unit and one ADU for a hun, or for a 25 by 140 lot, which is the historic lot size, obviously the area over there does not have historic lots from the city, but it's, so it's gonna be one for every 3,500 square.
Thank you. Are you?
Thank you, I have a question too, so I know we've discussed the mixed use designation and that we are currently moving towards adding that, can you explain, just so, R2, we have that the designation and, and what is required, but could you add mixed use into that understanding or in that information, please, Matthew?
Can you explain the question a little bit more?
What does mixed use mean in the, in, in planning and why in this situation would, you know, is that being considered or, or why are we considering it in general anyway?
Sure, so to go all the way back to the discussion with the zoning commission, staff had suggested that the first block basically between parking calendar be shown or be designated as highway commercial, which is currently our only mixed use district, mixed use meaning it allows for both commercial and residential uses, the zoning commission was concerned that highway commercial allows for well, to highway style uses of things like large scale retail, auto shops, auto dealers, gas stations, things like that, that weren't particularly appropriate for that location, which neighborhood commercial does not, currently, at the last zoning commission meeting, they did make a recommendation on opposed new mixed use district which does not allow for those more auto centric uses, which would allow for residential and a relatively similar use set to that as shown in neighborhood commercial, the proposal that the zoning commission has made a recommendation on would allow one dwelling unit for every 875 square feet, so basically four dwelling units per historic city lot, as well as a significant number of commercial uses, basically the same ones that are allowed in neighborhood commercial, it's one of the things that's been discussed pretty prevalently in the growth policy is to allow for a mix of uses to create more walkable and bikeable neighborhoods as well as to clear up some of the food deserts that we may have in the city, food desert being individuals living far enough away from food that they have to drive, basically they can't walk to get groceries, so that's why we would consider it in that location, the growth policy future land use map does show it sort of similarly to highway commercial, a mixed use is basically a, similar to highway commercial without the auto centric uses, so that's why it was, was considered.
Thank you, very helpful, and then the neighborhood commercial, can you just, that's my last question, finish describing neighborhood commercial differences between highway commercial and neighborhood commercial?
So there are a couple of differences, one which was noted pretty significantly in the staff report in that neighborhood commercial does not allow for residential uses at all, which highway commercial does, there is an existing home in the area, so that will become a non-conformant use until the zoning is changed to mixed use, if it is approved by the commission, the other differences is that neighborhood commercial doesn't allow for some of those more auto centric uses, car dealerships, large scale retail, drive throughs, things like that, it's really designed to be a commercial district for, for internal to neighborhoods and to be basically accessible to the neighborhood rather than accessible to the road.
Thank you Matthew, very helpful, okay, any other commissioners have questions or comments? Okay, no other questions or comments? All right, do we have a motion from the commission on ordinance 3022?
I move we pass ordinance 3022.
Second.
We have a motion by Maybe and a second by Friedman, roll call please.
Chair Holland?
Yes?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Friedman?
Four.
Commissioner Mayby?
Four.
Commissioner Newt?
Four.
Motion passes. Our last public hearing tonight is ordinance number 3024 and ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana of its intent to amend city ordinance number 2041, 2049, 2055 and 2098 as codified by chapter nine, section 242 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Traffic and Vehicles by establishing a loading unloading zone for Dorothy's daycare at 905 West Clark Street and establishing a penalty for violations thereof, Mr. Cardus.
Thank you Madam Chair, so this is the second reading of this ordinance that establishes the loading unloading zone for Dorothy's daycare on Clark Street, if you can see on page 62, we have included the hours there that would be used, so it's 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday, so it would not be needed on the weekends, so that would be available for neighborhood parking on the weekends, so that was one of the requests from the commission last time and Public Works and the street department worked with Dorothy's daycare to make sure that we understood the hours on that, so that will be signed in that way, but other than that, the, the loading unloading zone remains unchanged other than specifying the hours that it was required. signed in that way. But other than that, the, the loading unloading zone remains unchanged, other than specifying the hours that it was required.
All right, any clarifying questions before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, I just want to ask one quick question. First of all, thank you, city staff, public works, for getting the hours. Is the rest of the time, is it just a regular residential parking spot then? I just want to make sure I understand.
If it's outside the signed hours for drop off, then it becomes just standard parking. So it's not inside a two hour zone or anything else. So there's just no restrictions on parking if it's outside of the hours.
Thank you. That was my only question. I yield.
All right, anything else before we open the public hearing? This public hearing is now open on ordinance number thirty twenty four. Any public comment or questions? Any public comment? Okay, I have no public comment. This public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, question? I don't hear from anyone. I guess I have one. Could we put it up on? Or the map up, please? Just so public know is exactly where this new parking zone would be. Michael, is that possible? Are you looking?
It is. It'll just take us a second to bring it up.
Okay. We generally get the pictures or the maps, so I want to make sure that we offer that. We usually get Google maps up in the speed of light, so.
So this is the nine oh five West Clark. So to kind of give you a, a frame of reference, here's Town and Country at the end of Clark Street. So it's right in this area. Here's Wyden's Elementary School. Drop a guy down there for you so you can. So it is right in this area. So here's the daycare, here's the church. So this is the, the area that would be painted for the loading zone.
So right in front of that driveway?
To the, to the side of it, yes.
Okay, in front of this side of the church on this, to the left or to the right?
So right here, I don't know if you can see the big arrow. It would be right in this area is where it'd be painted back from the curb.
Okay, all right. And Michael, can you just refresh the public to on when a request is made, how are the neighbors informed of that request? Are, are they by law?
There's no requirement by law. However, we usually do talk to the neighbors. In this case, we did have a conversation with the church and they had no issues with using that as a loading zone.
Okay, great. And I know there's some housing there. I think it's four units. To the other side of the, of the daycare was, were they consulted or just was it discussed with the, the owners of those units?
It was, since they have their own parking and this was on the opposite side, they weren't we weren't, they weren't contacted during the process.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Just getting some clarifying answers. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion from the commission on ordinance thirty twenty four?
I make a motion, we pass ordinance thirty twenty four.
Well, second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Sheriff Hoiberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner Newt.
For.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda, we have our ordinances. We have two tonight. First one is ordinance thirty twenty five and ordinance of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending article two four and five, chapter thirty of the Livingston municipal code entitled zoning as it pertains to manufacturing and use table amendments. Mr. Cardus and/or Matthew or both you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So these ordinances are first readings. So we will have public hearings on them at a future meeting. Usually we skip one and do the next one. This first one is just a general update to the zoning code, and I will let Matthew present his staff report.
So this is a zoning update driven by several conversations I had with food and beverage producers specifically, not really knowing if they'd be considered light manufacturing, manufacturing or heavy manufacturing, which basically encourages them not to open in the city of Livingston, specifically uses that the city probably would like to encourage. So the goal of this update is to clarify those definitions. The manufacturing has essentially been broken down into four different categories of increasing intensity, similar to the way Bozeman and Missoula do it. And there's also an update to redefine restaurants and bars. Basically, the way that restaurants were defined in the city, it didn't include places that you would take the food out of, such as a bakery, which were not listed as a use at all in zoning. So things like the bakery downtown existed in this sort of gray zone of potentially not being allowed. So just some clarifying and making it more clear what category specific producers fall under, as well as updating the use table to ensure that low, low to no impact, small scale manufacturing is allowed in commercial industrial zones as they are compatible with, with commercial and industrial uses and are generally things the city would like to encourage, things like coffee roasters, we had a discussion of brew chafes or things like that. So that's basic, the basic overview of the zoning update. I will say there has been one change made to the ordinance since the zoning commission saw it. They did vote five zero to recommend approval. It was being run concurrently with the new mixed use district. So that was included in this to show how these uses would be worked into that. Those have now become out of sequence, so that has been removed from this update. So we don't approve something that hasn't basically been recommended by the zoning commission at the time. So there was a change made there, but it doesn't actually affect the, the meat of the zoning ordinance. It's just to make sure that the city commission wasn't moving ahead of the zoning permission. And that's all I have for the staff report. If you have any questions for me, I am happy to answer those.
All right, this is the first reading, so it will move to a public hearing, like stated, but anyone have any clarifying questions before we open it? Okay. Any public comments on ordinance number thirty twenty five? I don't see any hands. Any public comment? Okay. Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Go ahead.
I just want to say I've read through this whole thing. Nice job. It's really answers a lot of questions and defines things better. And so, yeah, nice job, Matthew and zoning commission. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin. Anyone else?
I I'm just thinking about how many times we voted on amendments or changes to this, this few pages of code, and I almost wish we could go back to before, to the before times and compare what all this looks like now compared to then. This is fantastic. These are great changes that have been a long time coming. When people ask what we do for economic development, this is an example to make it easier for economic development. So I'm really glad that staff brought this to us. And that just this zoning continues to be made current and contemporary. So thank you. This is great. I like it. I yield.
Thank you. Muting and unmuting all meeting long is tough on me. So you see me come, you know, close and such. Any other public comment? I mean, not public, sorry, commissioner comment. I also, I appreciate the forward thinking thinkingness of this ordinance or these changes. I think it's bringing us forward and giving our community more offers to have developments and, and various things. I'm thinking some of the um, I don't know, like breweries and, and different things that I, I see coming out of this or different, you know, local bakeries or local businesses that could really kind of define us. And distillery, we're still waiting on that one. But love it. Love the work. Love the work the city is doing to update. Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion from the commission on this ordinance number twenty twenty or thirty twenty five?
Make a motion to approve ordinance thirty twenty five. Second.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Sheriff Hoiberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner Newt.
For.
Motion passes. Our next ordinance is ordinance number thirty twenty six and ordinance of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter seven, police department, article four dispatch services as enacted by ordinance number eighteen oh eight, regulating the fees for false alarms. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is mainly an administrative ordinance. Again, it's a first reading. It'll come back for a public hearing if approved and then would affect, be affected thirty days after the second reading if approved. This particular ordinance change, we basically removes the amount of the fees from the ordinance and then sets that as a as basically a amount that the city manager would set and then bring before the commission for approval. So it's going to be more of a, a resolution so that we don't have to do a public hearing and two readings and wait thirty days just to change a fee. So it basically removes the fees out of the ordinance and would put them into the the realm of a resolution to set the fees in the future. In fact, there's a resolution later in this in this packet that we, we can look at as far as what the actual fees are. The general purpose of the ordinance itself is if a private business has an alarm system and the dispatches is, receives false alarms, i.e. the alarm system isn't working properly, then they are charged for that response. It basically has an incentive to make sure that the alarm system is up to date and always working properly. There have been occasions in the past where we have had to send, you know, either police or fire and multiple times in an evening because the alarm system continued to give false signals. We don't have the option to not respond to an alarm if it's brought to dispatch. So this basically just is a way to encourage businesses to make sure their alarms are functioning properly and we aren't wasting resources responding to to false alarms. Obviously, if there was a reason the alarm went off, then these fees don't apply. It's only if the system is faulty and it's just spurious alarms.
Thank you. I will ask my questions later, but any clarifying questions?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Is there a minimum, in other words, if the first time that it winds up being a false alarm is, is that going to apply to the fee or is that just a, or will that be kind of a, a warning notice?
So that's, that's covered in the resolution, but there is, it basically with the first false alarm, there does start to be a fee, unless they can bring forward extenuating circumstances, that there's a reason that that false alarm occurred that was outside their control, then it can be waived by the city manager for any of those issues.
Thank you.
All right. Well, let's open it to public comment. Any public comment on ordinance thirty twenty six? I don't see anyone. Double check. Chat. Okay. There's no public comment. Commissioners, any questions, comments? I get, I will start. Michael, so where have we had an increase in, in problems and, and then why then have we moved to in this direction? Okay, as well as what was it before if we had false alarms? Did we have any fees or any fines?
So if you can, if you can see on page one fourteen in the agenda, there is the, that is the current schedule of fees that are currently charged for the false alarm. So yeah, there is a, there is a already a schedule of fees that we're removing from the ordinance and then we would place into a resolution. And so for just the, the administrative purposes of this change is so that those fees are not in the ordinance but are more flexible so that we can address it if there's a problem. Either people are being charged too much or people are not being charged enough, that we can change that more easily. So this is really just an administrative change for ease of use to be able to control those fees. False alarms ebb and flow. There are times when we have responded to a lot of false alarms and there are times when it isn't, is a big problem, which is one of the reasons we're looking for that flexibility. Now, there have been, there have been times where there are businesses that had twenty or thirty false alarms in a month, which is a lot of resources for the city to send out. And in some of those cases, we worked with the business owners because they couldn't figure out what the problem was, but we knew they were making a good paid effort to try and fix the problem, and that will continue. We'll continue to work for businesses if they're trying to solve the problem. Really, the fees are for people that aren't trying to solve the problem and are just wasting city resources. So that's why they exist. But we're removing them just to make it more flexible from an administrative standpoint.
So I should maybe if this does pass, then we would move it into that next or into the resolution. And maybe I would ask then. But I'm curious what's changed. So I don't know if you want to answer it now or when we move into the resolution, but why? Why? In that flexibility, I guess my worry is that if it's not concrete, then is it fair? You know? And why now versus why is this coming to us?
Sure. So this has been, I mean, the false alarm issue has been around for a long time. This, the flexibility to change it doesn't make it any less concrete, because anything that any fee structure has to still be approved by the commission. That has not changed. The only change is it doesn't take two readings 15 days apart plus 30 days. So it's administratively streamlined, but as far as the the clearness of the fees and what they're for, none of that will change. It will still be by resolution. It'll still be approved by the commission. So there is no increased ambiguity in what the fees are or when they're charged. Why now? This is just one of those things that we have been meaning to get to for a while, but has not risen to the top. And we've had a little bit of breathing room so we can do some improvements to our administrative processes, which is, which is what this is. This is just an improvement to our administrative process to streamline it and make it easier for us to make changes if necessary.
Thank you. Very helpful. Hey, anyone else have questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll piggyback on your questions if I'm correct. So it sounds like I'm just going to use different words to see if I understand the meaning. It sounds like what you're saying is moving this into a resolution and removing it from an ordinance makes it easier to change the fees quickly rather than the 30-day waiting period. Is that, is that more or less right?
That's correct, except it's actually more than 30 days. It's more like 45 to 60 days.
Right.
Full hearing.
Because you have to do first hearing, wait 30 days, second hearing, and then 30 days for it to go into place?
Correct.
Okay. But otherwise, implementation and fee, you can't, for example, you can't change it on a whim. It'll still be set through a vote of the commission.
Correct. It always has to be approved by the commission, so that does not change.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. All right. Are we ready for a motion?
I make a motion. We pass ordinance 3026.
Second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Maybe. Roll call, please.
Chair Holm.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner Maybe.
Or.
Commissioner News.
Or.
Motion passes. I'm moving on to our resolutions tonight. We have two resolutions. Our first resolution is number 5007, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign a general services agreement with Morton Buildings, Inc. for construction of a structure at Public Works located at 330 East Bennett Street. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is basically just authorized me to sign a contract for the construction of a cold storage building. This building is mainly going to be used for vehicle storage to get some of our expensive vehicles out of the weather and put it inside during the winter months. This is something that's been on the Public Works priority list for years. I would say five to eight years, and we have an opportunity to fund it this year. The building itself will be about 64 by 144. So you're talking about a 7,400 square foot building. So it's a significant structure with garage doors and entrances for workers as well. The total cost right now in the contract, you can find on page 125 of the agenda, it's $257,636 for for that structure. So that's a, that's a pretty good sized structure that will be able to take care of quite a bit of our equipment. And this will be a very nice addition to protect some of the investments that we've made in some of that expensive equipment. As in, it's pretty straightforward. It's nothing. It's not very complicated construction. It's basically just a machine shed type construction that you'll see for cold storage. So I'd be happy to answer your questions.
All right, any clarifying questions? Okay, let's open it to public. Any public comment on resolution 5007? Any public comment? I don't see anyone's hands. Okay, no public comment. Let's move it to commissioners, comments and questions. Any commissioners?
I'll ask a question.
Okay, go ahead.
First, I think this is, this is a nice project that Shannon has been bringing up for quite a while about extending the life of vehicles for Public Works. I'm also wondering, given the state of the city, is this building going to be, are you, are you moving towards like electric buildings with solar capacity or like being built to standards to put solar? Asking because Public Works is already on that track, and so probably makes sense to ask now before it's built, what the plans are.
Sure. For this particular building, because it's basically just cold storage, any energy requirements are going to be minimal. So an investment in solar probably would not be worth the cost in this case, because in general, it won't be, it won't be lit during the day. So it really be only as people come in and out. So while solar could more than, could easily power it, the cost of the installation is is probably not going to be recovered because of the low use of electricity. While we're still dedicated to investing in solar, there's probably a lot better places that we could invest that money where we have much higher electrical demands. The water reclamation facility, I think, is going to be one for a long time. That's an area where we can significantly upgrade the solar array there, and we will continue to use that power, as much power as we can generate there. So this particular building isn't a good candidate for solar, but we will continue to look for places where solar makes sense and is a, is a good investment.
But we're doing, we're moving towards electrification of our buildings. Is that correct? Away from methane gas, like for the city hall, for example?
Yeah, for city hall, we certainly did. In fact, we just got our latest energy bill, and again, we cut the the natural gas consumption in half from what it was last year with with many fewer people in the building. So we've been very successful in that. This building probably will not be heated. So there will be probably no natural gas usage at all in this building. It'll probably be just electrical lighting.
Thank you. Yield. Thank you. I'll ask. So refresh us again on where this building will be located. And then you did use the word probably for it being cold storage. All along, I had heard that it was, you know, every time it's come to us, and it's been in, you know, proposed in the budget on and off for some time. Wouldn't you say probably what's that mean? And as well as where is it located?
Sure. So this will be out at the Public Works facility, out by the transfer station. So that'll be the area it's in, which is where most of our equipment is. So that makes the most sense for for having this. So this particular contract before you is absolutely cold storage. There's no, there's no heat in this particular item. If in the future, we decided that part of it could be converted into a shop or offices, at that point, then we would look at what would be the most appropriate thing. But as for right now, this is just vehicle and cold storage.
Great. Thank you. All right, anyone else? Do we have a motion from the commission on resolution 5007?
I make a motion. We pass resolution 5007.
Second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Maybe. Roll call, please.
Chair Holm.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner Maybe.
Or.
Commissioner News.
Or. Motion passes. Last resolution tonight is resolution 5 or 5008, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, setting the fees for false alarms for police and fire protection. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the resolution we just talked about, basically, that sets the alarm fees. Now, the change is not complete to the ordinance yet, so the ordinance will take priority until it is changed, if it is changed on the second reading. But this will, one, it lets you look at both items at the same time, so you can see what our initial proposal is. And if passed tonight, then this will just sit ready, and once the ordinance is changed, then this would take effect immediately. So I think addresses some of the concerns you had when we were looking at the fee changes. I think specifically Commissioner Maybe's question on the first false alarm, you can see that we have changed it now, so the first false alarm is $0. So no one is charged for the first false alarm once this takes effect, if the ordinance has changed. If this resolution is setting the fees, there's no no fee for the first false alarm. Basically, that is the gimme, you know, we assume everybody has a problem once in a while. But you also can see that we've reduced the fee significantly for second and third alarms for specifically fire. So the second alarm from fire has gone from $100 to $25, and the third alarm from $250 to $50. We've matched it up to what the the police fees were, and now instead of the fourth alarm for fire being $500, it's at $100 as well as false alarms for the police department. So we thought some of those fines were excessive or the fees were excessive. So we have, our recommendation to you is to bring those down to give that first false alarm basically as a as a mulligan, and then we think are much more reasonable amounts for the second, third, fourth, and greater false alarms going forward.
Okay. Any clarifying questions before we open it to public comment?
Yeah, I'll ask a couple of clarifying questions.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Um, my first one is the third section on resolution 5008. I'm looking at page 135 of the packet. It says, whereas the City Commission believes that the proposed impact fees do not exceed new developments proportionate share of the costs incurred by the city in accommodating the infill development when considering. Is that a typo, or is this related to impact fees somehow that hasn't been mentioned yet?
No, I think that didn't get deleted. We probably just were using the impact fee resolution.
Okay. And then my second question is a process question. It seems like it probably would not be typical to vote in a resolution before the ordinance has gone through the public hearing. So that's a question that I have about voting something, voting on something when the formal process is not yet complete for the other part of what we're talking about, which is amending the ordinance.
In this case, it's really up to the commission on how you want to do it. Presenting both at the same time, I think, gives you an idea of where we're headed. If you don't want to vote on the resolution for now, you can certainly hold off on it. If you do vote on it, it doesn't change anything because the ordinance is, has basically primacy, and so the ordinance will be the the law until it's changed. If the resolution is already passed, as soon as the ordinance has changed, the the resolution would become into effect as the next highest action of the commission. But that is, the process is really up to the commission on how you'd like to do it.
Melissa, anything else on that?
Uh, no, thank you, Chair Holm.
All right, anyone, any other commissioners? Yeah, I, I was surprised to see them together, I think, because it's not a normal process that we go through. Anyone else have some thoughts on that?
Well, this would be informational view of the outcome in terms of implementing the ordinance. If we don't want to vote on it now, and if it would be included in the second reading.
It could be.
Or if it was voted on now and the ordinance was not approved, it would be moot, wouldn't it? Or not?
Courtney, can you help with that?
I can. If the ordinance change didn't occur, then the resolution would be moot because it is designed to go with the amended ordinance. And if it ultimately doesn't pass, then it has no force in effect. So this is just a way for you all to be able to see them together so that you're not seeing half of it now and half of it later. If you want to pass it now, you can. You don't have to. But it's in front of you and and contemporaneous with the ordinance so that you can see how it works together. There was also a request by police and fire that those alarm fees be the same for both because they were not in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. I, I think, I tend to not say this, but I'm going to say this in this case of I feel like the fee for a fourth false and higher is low. In the sense of what, what is the cost to the city when we do send out a safety fire police to a false alarm? What is the estimated cost?
It depends a lot on the type of alarm, the time of day, and who we send out. Especially for both fire and the LPD. Usually, there are people on shift, so it's not calling people in. If it's a, a, so that would be like for a security alarm. For a fire alarm, it depends on how we respond. If we respond with a full shift or a full recall, then we'll pay the cost of the people to get called back in. And that can, again, that varies greatly depending on the time they they spend in the station. For a false alarm, that should be minimal. In fact, in general, the the first responding firefighters would probably be on scene prior to other people getting back in. So they can usually call that back as a false alarm and stop the the recall at that point. But it can vary significantly. The, I think one of the reasons it's at $100 is because it is cumulative. So if you get to a fourth, you've already paid 25, 50, and 100, and it's 100 every time. So if you had three or four alarms in one night because your system is malfunctioning, you know, that could be, if it was already your fourth, that's an additional $300. And I think that was a concern is if people are having a problem, we didn't want to make it an outrageous fee. We just wanted to make sure that they understood that they needed to get the problem fixed.
Okay. Well, I think we're giving people a good break because I know that the cost, our highest costs in our city budget are for fire and police, and obviously, they're an important part of our community and keeping us safe. So I think So, I think it's, you know, mistakes happen, but then multiple mistakes start to add up. And this is a pretty good deal for that, those mistakes. Just my thoughts. Anyone else?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz. I kind of look at it this way. Yeah, they do seem low, but if you think about it, fire and police are already they're already at work at that point. So, it's not like it's, unless we call in a second shift, there really isn't that much of an added expense, the way I look at it. Since they're already on duty and being paid, they're just making a call. Just my two cents for what it's worth. I yield.
Thank you. Anyone else? And so, I guess it's to that point. So, Melissa, did you want any more feedback on moving it or looking at this issue in our future agenda? I don't want to miss something before we move it to a vote.
Well, I would.
Motion, I should say.
Well, I have an idea for a motion. If it, I'll need, I'll need Courtney to fact check me, since I don't have parliamentary procedure memorized. But I have an idea for a motion.
Alright, why don't, do you want to move it to a motion then?
Sure. I'll make a.
What can I do to help?
I want to make a motion, I think this is the motion I want to make, to postpone consideration until after the public hearing and the fixing the typo on the resolution.
Certainly, I would ask that you include fixing the typo, which I've actually already done.
More clearly or directly?
No, specifically. I thought I had done it, and I missed it. That's entirely my fault.
That's okay.
You don't necessarily have to make a motion to postpone. It's more procedurally correct to do so. But if you all basically agree that you would like to look at this again when it comes before you for a public hearing in the second reading on the ordinance, and then you want to pass it, that's fine. But you don't, you don't need to have a motion to postpone it. You can just decide to do that as a group. Like I said, the motion is more procedurally correct, but it's not necessary.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to postpone consideration until after the public hearing and with the correction on the third stanza of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Newt and a second by maybe, I think.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Chair Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner Maybe.
Or.
Commissioner Newt.
For.
Motion passes. I think what we'll do, so we're on to our action item, and we have about 10 minutes. What do you guys think if we take our short break? Because we're going to be right in the middle of the discussion when we usually take our break. So, this gives us a few minutes before we start the action item discussion. And then, we move on to City Manager's manager comments, and then we're done, and us.
I agree.
Alright, so, let's start our break. We'll see everyone in about whatever, usually five to eight minutes, depending on our situation. Alright. Or, do we have everyone back?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yep.
Sweet. So, Melissa, are you back?
Right here, thank you.
Okay. Alright, so we're going to move on to our action is to discuss board communications. I'm going to have Michael, if you would start with just refreshing all of us on that communication. And it is in the agenda that when it was sent out, any reason, or you know, reasoning why, whatever the reason for the communication and the clarification written in there, and so we can start with that and then move to a discussion.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair. So, the impetus behind the email in general and communication was that some of the boards were experiencing difficulties with the public and the types of feedback they were getting. Basically, sometimes public feedback can, can be a little rough. So, we wanted to make sure that boards were focused in the areas where they can accomplish the most without having to deal with a lot of things that should be outside of their purview. Especially complaints about city operations, things that boards don't have any say in or oversight over. They shouldn't have to deal with negative interactions with the public over those things. So, it was basically just a review of, hey, what are boards, what are they for? Who do they talk to? How does it work? And I would say the overall generalities are, all of our boards in Livingston are advisory boards, meaning they make no policy decisions. That wasn't always the case, but it is now, since the Commission is acting as a Board of Adjustments. So, none of the boards have decision-making authority. All of their authority is advisory to the Commission. So, the boards basically work directly for the Commission. And they should communicate directly with the Commission, specifically through written recommendations that are voted on by their boards. And that is the primary means of communication between boards and the Commission. If the boards need to communicate with staff for some reason, that line of communication runs through the City Manager, basically so that I, as a City Manager, can farm those out to the correct people, get the right answers, and get the answers back in an overall aspect of the city, not necessarily from a single city employee or even a single department head, but from the city overall in general. And it may be that the question they think they want to ask Public Works is actually a question for building or planning. And so, we will direct those questions as need be, and then I will be the main conduit of information between city staff and city boards. As well as, we want to make sure that boards aren't communicating on behalf of the city where they don't have, they don't have authority, or they don't have the basically the background to do so. So, that would be instances of talking to contractors, talking to individual landowners about possible easements or right-of-ways. It's basically to make sure that boards don't sign the city up for either purchases or actions that have not been approved through the Commission, or that aren't aren't supported by city staff. So, it's really just to make sure that the boards have the right chains of communication, that they are getting the information they need, and also in a way to take take some of the work away from boards when it gets down to the detailed level. When we get to implementation of ideas, things that take money, things that take staff time, things that take scheduling and basically execution, boards shouldn't have to worry about those items. That is city staff stuff to worry about. Where does the money come from? Who is going to do this work? How are we going to do it? When is the contract signed? Who's going to sign it? Those are all administrative items that city staff can take care of on behalf of boards. And boards should be able to focus then on policy issues, because they are advisory to the Commission, which is the policymaking body. And so, that was the intent and kind of the overview of, of the communication with the board chairs.
Okay, thank you. So, initially, this was brought, I brought it to the Commission for discussion. We had to cancel it, because Michael was out a couple of different meetings that it had been scheduled. And I brought it because it was brought to me by boards and by community members unsure then of their roles and feeling like this communication sort of tied some hands where they hadn't, didn't know that was the expectation. So, just that's the background as far as why it was brought by me to the Commission. So, how should we start? I would love to get feedback from Commission as well as community, if there's any public comment on this. And then, I do definitely have some questions and and clarifications that I would like from the city in regards to some just parts of the communication. What else, what else am I missing from the Commission?
Well, I think the the basic explanation or started discussion is what, what, what would be the problems involved with this description of the process? Why did, why did board members feel as if their hands were tied, or they, they were somehow, what they should be doing, they were no longer able to do? So a description of the problem, the problem is, I think, a good starting point.
Well, I would love to hear from, you know, some of the community too, as far as their sense of that. I'm sort of delivering concerns as well as a commissioner speaking for the community. I know one of the concerns was the line of communication seemed to not necessarily line up with what has been historically done as far as boards in in working with the community and communicating with the community as well as them lining up with some of their or with the bylaws and how the bylaws state their roles and their role in communication. That's something where I can see sort of some conflict that has come. Any other? Can anyone else help me with some of the concerns and or?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Before we even talk about concerns of the boards in response to this letter, I think I think we have to back up a little bit further in time and talk about what problems happened before the letter was sent out. What like what was the letter responding to? Like what's the thing we're trying to solve here? Right? I think that that's the place to start before we even talk about what are the board's concerns with the letter? Just just to direct us and help us hone in on solutions. And so I have thoughts about that, but Chair Holton, I want to respect that you want to if you want to get public comment first, I'm happy to wait or I'm happy to share now and after whatever you need.
Yeah, I think that would be super helpful and I don't want to I wasn't the only one who put this on the agenda, so I do need some feedback from other commissioners. That'd be great. And I think Melissa helping front load this a little bit and putting it into perspective as to where, why we're here discussing it. And that would be great, great help. And then I think we leave it, we open it up and see if there is any public comment and we talk through some of the concerns or some of the positives in the communication or whatever. However, the commission then moves it forward at moves it along at the end, I should say. So thank you. I think you you should start.
In my, you know, I have a different perspective clearly in the as a commissioner than Michael will is a city manager, so I think it will be important to to hear from two branches of government, right? Because we have different, we have different, we're seeing different things. So I think it seems to me that there's, and this has been the case, I think, since I've been a commissioner. And if you remember when I first became a commissioner, it's when we had that joint planning board. And we did zoning and planning. And there wasn't sort of consistent consistency across boards in terms of how the process of boards, right? And so that's where this very first came from. Was there if somebody from the public went to a tree board meeting or a planning board meeting or a historic preservation board meeting or whatever board they went to. It might be like a totally different appearing process across boards, like it wasn't standardized, which made it difficult for the public sometimes to know how to participate or when to participate. So that's like where we were starting at like three years ago. And I think and I don't, I think that's normal, like that's a thing that cities go through and we just have to make our policies clear. And our expectations clear. And that's one thing that we struggled with, right? Since COVID times is figuring out how to do board trainings. That was something that this commission has talked about being a priority so that folks that were volunteering on boards would know how to participate. And the boards would know what we expected. But that's been a challenge for us that we haven't been able to overcome yet that we need to figure out. So that's the beginning. And then I think it's my understanding that each board has had different challenges with some of the things that Michael brought up, right? So the decisions that he was making that like our city insurance would not cover the board. Right? Like if if a board entered into a contract, that could be problematic because it wouldn't be valid because that's not how our process works. We're volunteer boards or that's like an extreme example, but it's an example that probably has happened somewhere in local government in Montana. And so those are the kinds of things we want to avoid. So I think each board has had unique challenges. And my understanding is that we want to make sure that we're working in a way that's efficient for our boards and the commission and also city staff, right? Because it really is the staff's job to like execute and implement and administer some of the things we're doing. And that's by design, by the way, our government is structured and like our insurance covers staff in a way I'm sure that boards would not be covered. Courtney could speak to that and tell me if I'm wrong, but I bet that that's the case. The other thing I think we should talk about. So I mean, I so that's the first part and I, you know, that's my perception of how things are going. It would be great to hear if that's Michael's perception or not of from where from his viewpoint, more or less, without getting into details of the challenges of each board. The other thing that I think is important to talk about though is who is the board serving? It's my understanding that the boards are serving at the request of the commission. And so I think of them as being part of the legislative branch. They're advising us on policy. Which is why, right? They're not administering contracts because that's the executive branch. And so thinking about who does this guidance need to come from? In terms of like lines of communication. Would it be more appropriate for the commission to be putting together guidance and offering it if they're serving the legislative branch? How do those roles play out in terms of guidelines is one thing that I'm thinking about. And so that's all before we even talk about what's in the letter. I think those are the things to get on the same page about. So we even know like what we're addressing in the letter. Does that help Chair Holton for like where we're starting from?
Yeah, I that was excellent. Thank you, Melissa. Do you want to keep going with anything in particular before we move?
Well, I think, you know, I just think that's really key. Like I think knowing getting clarity on like, are the boards legislative advisors or the executive advisors? I think that's really important because that should determine like where the who the line of communication is coming from when we communicate as we think about communication like I think that's really a critical step.
I think that that's Courtney, do you think you could help us with that question to answer that question and and Michael and
Yeah, I think we can
try and clarifying that.
Sure. And I think Commissioner Noot has brought up a couple of great points that I think are important to address. She's correct in the fact that in general, our boards were not very standardized and that training is an issue. And so this communication is an aspect of that training, right? It's an aspect of, hey, this, these are the expectations. These are, this is what we expect as a commission. So where do those expectations come from? They come from the commission approved board man. Right? That's what the committee, that's what the commission has already said. This is how we want our boards to operate. And so that is the policy on how that works. In fact, if you go to page 164 of the current agenda, it actually outlines the role of the city manager in communicating with the boards. And basically it says, and exactly as Commissioner Noot said, the boards and committees work under the direction of the city commission and do not report to the city manager. That is absolutely true. The boards and was one of the issues I brought up in the beginning, the boards work directly for the commission. They do not work for the city manager at all. However, it is a job of the city manager to review products from boards and committees prior to the presentation in city commission, ensure all boards and committees are adhering to state laws, city ordinances, and the policies set forth in this chapter and act as a conduit of information between the city commission and its boards and committees outside of formal meetings. So that's exactly where this type of communication falls in. I as a city manager review what's going on with the boards. I take the commission approved board policies and then try to clarify that into a communication to the boards outside of a formal meeting. So that communication falls under, that's what I'm using when I say, why would I send out a communication on behalf of the commission? It's because that's what the commission has said I should do. That is the role of the city manager in dealing with the boards. And it's absolutely, the intent is to, one, make sure expectations are clear so board members aren't struggling. So they don't know for sure what they should or should not be doing. We're trying to make it as possible. And then and this and this is something I think worked very well, at least with a few of the boards is the communication went out, I had meetings with the chairs and they said, okay, I want I want to talk about this communication and see what what does it mean? And then we sat down with a couple of the different boards and went through it. And I think that was very helpful and I think everyone had a great understanding when we were done. Hopefully I'll get a chance to do that with all the boards at some point, but that is, that is really the intent is to go through it, to point out what the commission has already said and to try and keep everybody in those roles that are appropriate for their job. And Commissioner Noot is absolutely right. Boards are part of the legislative branch, so they should be focusing on policy issues. And the city staff should take the burden of the execution of that once it's an approved policy or approval.
Melissa, anything on you'd like to clarify on that?
No, that's great. Thanks for pointing out that section as well in the policy handbook. I so I guess what that leads us to then you know, as a commission is the next part is this letter and what part of the letter is reflected in the policy handbook and what's not reflected in the handbook? And did, you know, what do we collectively as a commission think of some of those details? Like, how does that fit? With the handbook? Because certainly some of it is in there and some of it seems like it might be more subjective. So that's the stuff we have to figure out, I think, together.
And how could we do that? Where, how do, what would that look like? Does anyone have any ideas on what that would look like? Go ahead, Mel.
Actually, after being on boards for many years and with the commission, I think there needs to be a script. The first part of the script is that there's somebody that's in charge of that committee. And everything should be written down as to what that particular group is trying to do. And that the leader knows all the parameters and all the things about it. And then as they add people to it, they're going to listen to the script of where they fit into the process. I think we made a little very complicated here, but what's your job? What do you do as a teacher? I mean, what there's a starting place for everything, but there should be a script to it. This particular committee does such and such. The head of that committee understands all the parts of it and it's all on a piece of paper. As we add people to it, that they're going to get educated, but the chair has got all the ammunition in front of them. And you run with it. Am I missing something or what?
No, I think that you, you know, you're referencing the board, you know, what do we call it? The guide, not the guide, but the board. What is that? The handbook. Thank you. The handbook and how we developed a handbook and had and we've had trainings and we haven't missed that. That's been a problem that we haven't had enough board trainings just to to front load our new members that come in and out or come in. We're not training them on how the process works and the legislative part. Yeah, so I agree now that there is a need for for more of that and more clarity so that boards understand roles and and or responsibilities.
That's the critical part. The first part, as I said, without that, you're, you don't, you have to have a starting place. And somebody's got to know the rules and how many innings are we going to play this baseball game? And it's just that kind of thing. And then as you add people, you've got somebody conversant in what you're doing. And then you sit down with that person and it's an educational problem like you had with the chairman. But it's all written out and it's all in a thing. And as they add questions that those are great. That could be before they can bring eventually to to the commission or they talk to the city manager. And you've got all this communication going. They got a better chance of solving it than not having it. That's all I'm
Guidance. Yeah. Anyone else on that? I do have, I'd like to move on to another part of this and discuss it before we we open it to public comment. Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess I'm looking for clarification here. What we're, what is the problem that we're at right now? Is it a problem with the letter that was sent to the boards? Is that where we're at or exactly where are we? You know, our handbook is pretty well defined. Yeah, we definitely need board training and stuff like that. Once things normalize, it'll get better and become a little more standardized. But I guess I'm just looking for where we're at here right now.
So
I narrow it down exactly where we're at.
So
Thanks.
What we've brought and I I'm not sure if anyone has contacted you, Quentin, over this or Warren.
No, no, yes.
But I have been communicated with on some of the concerns of it not not really knowing how, for example, bylaws are lining up if you get to the discouraged communications section of the document or of the letter. Them not necessarily lining up and just not knowing really if we, what we have been doing or what boards have been doing is lining up with what is stated here. So making sure that, I mean, my biggest fear is that we lose board members because of tightening you know, too much on their roles and responsibilities. But also we have to stay within the bound bounds of the of their roles and responsibilities and how they work within the the system. So you know, there's a fine line between between those two issues. And so I know that one of the concerns, you know, if we go to the discouraged communications section of this, do you want to put it up on the up on the screen on page 140? And I guess I would like some feedback too from Courtney and Michael on are there differences between the boards and that requirements according to MCA? Or, you know, because of planning board, for example. So in this case, the first one is communication to city staff other than the city manager, the administrative assistant, you know, that has been that's something we have to do. So that makes a lot of sense, right? Public outreach, so discouraged, remember that just the beginning of this says that calling types of Calling types of communication should not. Should not be initiated by boards. Okay, so this is what they shouldn't do. So public outreach outside of notice board meetings or recorded minutes. Very. We're talking whole board actions or whole board. It clarified, Michael and Courtney, if that only reference whole. Full boards versus just a member having a conversation. Or a listening session, say at farmer's market.
So. The nature of boards is that they're designed to operate within board meetings. That is, that is in general how they're designed and how they're supposed to work. So when boards start doing things outside of those meetings, you start losing some of the, the. The requirements of capturing the input from the public. So if you're in a meeting, there's meeting minutes. And the public's input is captured in those meeting minutes and then they are, then that is preserved for the future. If you're holding board. Type meetings outside of. A noticed and. And recorded meeting, then you're starting to get. Really it's ex parte communications. It's communications with people that are affected by the decisions of the board that aren't captured in the public input process. And so boards need to be very careful with that. Are there ways to do that? Yes. Does that mean you can't talk to the person that comes up to you in the grocery store? No, that's not what that means, but that means that we shouldn't be planning and organizing to go outside of the board meeting process. To get information that isn't captured somewhere. In official minutes or official records. And if you do that, even if it's just your friend in the grocery store. You should, you should notify the board when you're debating that issue that you've had ex parte communications. If it's somebody that's affected by the decision. Now, because some of the boards have very wide ranging decisions. That's almost everybody. And that's why it's discouraged to have those kinds of events outside of the official board meetings. Staying inside the official board meetings gives you that safety net of. Following the open meeting laws, making sure that all the input from the public is captured. And that people know who is influencing board decisions because they get to see who's talking to the board. When you have those meetings outside of official meetings, you lose some of that right to observe. Because you don't know who the board is talking to. And unless they declare that as an ex parte communication. That part of board communications is kind of being hidden from the public in general. And so that's why those types of things are discouraged. Does that mean you can never do that? No, you can have a listening session in the park, but you should. Make sure that there's an agenda and you should make sure it's noticed so that the public knows that it's there. And if they want to see what's going on, they can attend. So. That's where that fine line is. Yes, we want the boards to, to be the conduit for public. Input, but we want them to do it in a way to make sure that that input is captured. And that that input is transparent to everybody that's involved in the process. Okay, Courtney, you have anything to add to that?
I think that mostly covered it. As we look at. The communication that's being discouraged. Thank you.
What's that, Courtney, sort of?
Sorry, I just wanted to pull that up so I could look at it at the same time we were talking. I think that Mike is exactly right when he says that. It's not that these things can't happen, it's that we're discouraging them so that the bulk of the public process. Is in those public meetings where everybody has the right to. Participate and to observe. Otherwise, the perception is that. The people that we would talk to if we were on boards. At the grocery store or when we're out having dinner. Are people that would have more influence over those board decisions? And that that would be happy, happening outside of a public process. So these are guidelines to try to keep us. Within that public process so that there aren't any questions about influence.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. And I think, you know, I, I do have some concerns just with, so like the third bullet, communicating directly with individual city residents on a specific. Issue outside of public meetings. That's pretty tight. Right, then that really referenced, references what we're talking about with the public. Forum. And having that, but then I do want to just reference something I was looking at bylaws of different boards and then in the. Parks and trails bylaws which we approved. That's part of the process. But, so it is in a bit of contradiction to what we're saying here. And one of them in particular is a. Article two, purpose of the board. Section or. Letter, let's see. D, maintaining communications with relevant Livingston and Park County committees. Staff and residents and pursuing opportunities to coordinate development, maintenance and funding of city and. County parks and trails. That's definitely not referencing going through the city manager. With all. All information. Or all requests of, of, so that's, you know, I know, these are just a lot of the concerns is that it's very. The document, the communication is very directed and we, I'm just trying to find, you know, what is the right? Thing for these boards to do. Because I don't want it to, we, I don't want us to. Lose this important part. Of what we do every day as a commission and as a city. So. This is definitely more direct than what I read. Another one of discouraged is communicating with outside agencies. Communicating with residents about city operations, specific requests or complaints should be directed to the city manager. And again, I'm just not seeing that in everything I'm reading as far as bylaws. Or how we have done the process. Communicating about enforcement with contractors, residents. Or the public as a city representative. I think I understand that one pretty clearly. Because that's directing. Request quotes of any services or material or even donations. So, I mean, just as someone who's been on, you know, every, the planning board and parks and trails. A big part of the work that especially. Well, when it comes to funding, I can't imagine there wasn't conversations about. You know, one-on-one conversations between on how we are going to pay for the growth policy. You know, if a board member had a conversation. Requesting or talking about quotes, requesting a quote and talking about it or even. Talking about is there potential for support in the community? I think that that's been a common way of working as boards and so. I don't know, I think these last discouraged ones are very directive and some of them are pretty. Tough and in the sense of how they line up. To what bylaws are saying. So. I think that that's where I am most concerned. As well as why I feel this was brought to me by. Members as well of different boards, so. I think that's kind of my basis right now.
And may I add to your comments, Chair Hoagland?
Go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you for sharing, first of all, that detail from parks and trails, that is. Something to figure out if there's conflict between bylaws and the policy handbook. And. If there's things we need, if we need to amend that policy handbook, we should amend it to make every, make sure everyone's on the same page. The other thing that I, you, you started at the. Discouraged communications, but I would even back it up to lines of communication. That section talks about communications to board assigned commissioners or the commission as a body. Sometimes that's been a challenge. I've heard that from board members, right? Not all. It's just been a challenge that leads on. To the commission and then I think we have some boards without commissioners, so we have some boards. That are going directly to the city manager for meetings to talk about board work. And the, the commission doesn't know what's going on, right, until there's something that's coming in front of us for a vote. So that's another concern. These are all things that we can work on improving and maybe setting some expectations, maybe we need. Formally more board reports, not formal presentations to the commission, but. Written board reports submitted as part of the agenda packet so that we can stay in the loop and not find out about something after it ends up on our agenda. Because the lines of communication or the process doesn't say that boards should be. Working directly with the city manager without, you know, we have to make sure that the commission is directing that work since they work for the commission, not for the executive branch, so. That's just another thing I want to highlight. That. I don't know that it's covered in this handbook that we expect. To be kept in the loop on boards and not just the city manager being kept in the loop on boards.
Yeah, good point. And I think it is clarifying or clarity that we need for the boards and. My sense is we have to find some middle ground on some of these. Issues. Because I am concerned about how. How boards will work. For our community and for our, the work that the commission does and that we. I don't know, we could lose something in this. How about any other commissioners want? To give their feedback? I want to make sure that we give a little public comment time if we, if people would like.
Well, my understanding to up to date is that. The situation that's. Situations that are bringing about this situation is the strictness level of communication. I haven't been contacted by anyone in terms of. Of board, board members. Does that cover it or is, I mean. I understand that what's been said so far as specific problems. Is that the sum of it? Basically, or, or there are, are there any other major items? That are a problem that. That have been brought up.
I think there. I think that's a great way of point, putting it, Warren, I do think communications and, and. Processes of those communications are kind of an overall. Concern. And then I think what Melissa brought up to and kind of pointing out. You know, where the roles and responsibilities and their roles, their role with dealing. They're working with the commission versus the executive, I think would be the two that. Overarching concerns. Am I, anyone else on that want to clarify?
The only thing that I would add, I, I did have several people like. I mean, this has been, this went out, what, in August, so it's been a while. Four or five people across a few different boards, for three or four boards. Reach out to me after this. I think some of it too is it. Maybe it just seemed like it was coming out of left field, like. Some, some people might have just been like, you know, some people might have just been like. Where is this coming from? What did, what did our board do wrong? I think that was. I think that's another thing that we haven't talked about, it's just some folks were caught off guard. You know, and as commissioners, right, like we hear feedback from many boards, so maybe we were less caught off guard. But I can imagine for an individual board member or individual. Chair of a board that didn't have the context of all of the boards and what's been happening over the last few years. I can see why people would be caught off guard without having that background context, so. Maybe that's just a delivery issue, how to deliver information. And provide a little bit of that background that Michael said, but that wasn't actually in the email. Just so folks knew that it wasn't coming out of left field.
Do you want? Some feedback from Michael on that? Melissa?
I think it's, I'm not asking, I'm just stating, I think that that was probably, that's my perception of the feedback that I've gotten, I mean, I think it's. Michael's here and it's great if he wants to speak for himself because I'm sure he got feedback also and he can. Maybe he has a different or similar perspective as me, I don't know. Be great to hear it.
Thank you, Michael.
So the feedback I got, like I said, I had a couple of meetings, a couple of board chairs and I thought it was very positive, we had great conversations. The opening paragraph of the email lays out the reasons for the email. It just gives a short background on that there have, there were issues or questions, so this is an attempt to standardize. You know, we can, we can talk about some of the specific discouraged communications if you'd like. So we can, you know, specifically dig down into those and exactly what they mean, but that's really up to you as the commission, if you want to hear that. But no, I've not, the, the only feedback I've gotten from the, the board chairs I've sat down with. Was that it was very helpful and it helped standardize communication process.
Okay, all right. How about if we, is there any public comment on this? Because I know there's quite a few people on and potential. Comments could be said on their concerns or their, what they're liking. Is there any public comment?
I, I'd like to say something.
Who is that?
That's Michael DeChellis.
Hi, Michael, go ahead.
Okay. So I think I, I think I'm officially, I'd like to just wear the hat of the conservation board chair. For this, I, I haven't given any feedback to anybody about this. That's on this call, so. I pre, I really appreciate y'all bringing it up. I think a couple of things, one, I, I actually, I actually really appreciated this memo. I think that from a, as, as someone who's worn this board chair hat for a couple of years now. Especially on a new advisory board. You know, the board, the handbook is great, but it's kind of just a start. And having, having a robust discussion about board processes and communications and that sort of thing is. Exactly what this memo has created for us and I think that that's exactly. As someone who's come on board to this sort of collective community organization that we all represent. In service to the community that we live in. I think that, that this is actually something that hasn't. My impression is that something that hasn't been focused on in a very long time. In this community and probably needs a, a real look at, a real priority for, for us if we want to get high quality board output. I, you know, I'm, so I come from an engineering project management background. So I'm a total process nerd. But most, most processes for me are justified mainly by their outcomes. And so I think it's probably worth stating, at least from my perspective, the outcomes I'd like to see, which are one. I'd really, really like to have engaged and interested community members on boards. I think that's really important. I think they, they are volunteer boards. This is really important that we point this out. These are volunteer people. That are here trying. that are here trying to do something with their community. They usually are, you know, they want, you, we want to have the best, most competent community members that we have in the various areas for advisory engaged in these boards and but we also want board members that really know how to follow the law. And so there's, there's a few things in this memo that I'd like to point out. One is that I think that it's smart in the way that it tries to, tries to balance what's probably necessary, which is that you know, we have a very limited city staff and they can't just constantly be bombarded by requests from city boards. I think that it's smart to have a lot of the communications that go into city staff go through some kind of channel, central channel. But also, I think that the, the limitations in board communication, you know, I think about the, the rule in the DeChellis household, usually with my kids are, are that the answer to every question is yes. As long as you can do it safely, right? And I, and so when I think, when I look at the limitations on board communications, I see items that would totally turn off some of the sort of competent, high, you know, highly engaged citizens that we want to be engaged in boards from serving on these boards for the betterment of our community. And that really is ultimately our collective responsibility is to come up with the best, smartest solutions for our community. And so my request would be that we look at how to better define these board processes to say yes to ex parte communications, but here's how. And here's how you do it in compliance with the law. You know, that kind of thing and that kind of guidance from the commission. We, we could have some really amazing output. And it looks like my time's out. So that's all I got. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for the well thought out answer. I think what you brought up that I would like to just add to is instead of discouraged, maybe it's encouraged or encouraged. That's the yes versus the no. I want to live at your house. I get to do anything as long as it's safe. It's awesome. All right. I think I saw, I think it was Shan, or no, Allison. Allison, go ahead.
Thank you, Dorell. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
Great. So my name's Allison. I'm sorry. I don't have the video on, but I am on the Parks and Trails Committee and I appreciate you guys talking about this tonight. It really helps clarify some things. I'm new to being on a board. I've been on the board for about 18 months now and it's a constant learning experience. I've been really involved in some big projects this year and spending a lot of time reaching out to the community because the community frequently asked for more time to share their thoughts on trails. And so I guess I appreciate Melissa's comments on how this policy felt like it was a little bit out of left field because we had been working under our bylaws that Dorell had brought up earlier and we're working hard to be the bridge between the city commission and the community on their opinions and their thoughts on upcoming parks and trails projects. And so I just want to make sure that it, the policy supports that bridge of communication between the community and the city commission and really that that is the goal of our volunteer boards. I think Michael made a great point that we do really want to make sure that our boards are supported and inviting to interactive and involved community members and also make the board meeting accessible to the community. Some, I think that, for example, city commission meetings on Zoom are a lot easier for maybe parents or people who work later shifts to, to like attend and listen to. Whereas sometimes it can be challenging to get to board meetings. And so with that thought, we did some outreach to the public this summer that was outside the board meeting. It was announced. And there was a goal and there was a way for the community to write down their thoughts so that it was maintained in the public comment. And so I just want to make sure that we're moving forward and utilizing that policy appropriately and able to continue our work without having our hands tied. I think that, thank you, Dorell.
Thank you, Allison. I think that was an interesting perspective as well. And thank you, Michael and Allison for giving your perspective on some of the work you're doing and how you are have utilized the time and, and the board's role. So thank you. Anyone else? Let's see. Looking for a little hands. Okay. I don't see any other faiths. Let's see. I don't think we have anyone else. Okay. So this obviously is at a discussion point and that's why it was put on the agenda and is to discuss, not necessarily answer everything, come up with a whole guide, you know, by the end of the meeting as to how boards, yeah, we should change our handbooks or whatever, our handbook. But I think the community needed to be heard as well as the commissioners needed to express some concerns that we have had brought to us. I do think we need to do some work and, and be I think as a city and as a commissioner and more clarity for boards. So that they, I might, like I said, from the beginning, my biggest fear is that we're going to, we're going to lose board members when we restrict too much, but we also need to do it under what is required and, and what is law. So I would hope that we do some work to improve how we work with boards in through and in, within our handbook and within our you know, opportunities for them to meet and work with city staffer with Michael in particular. And as far as giving them more opportunities to you know, present to the commissions or the commission. And so that we are educated as to the work they are doing. I think there is some, like overall, there is some changes that we need to make. Or we add to the good things that we're already doing. What other thoughts do you guys have?
I think there's some follow-up actions we can take. I think we should be looking into another training from local government, MSU Extension Local Government, Dan Clark's office for our boards. And I think the last one they did might've been in late 2018 or early 2019 in the before times. And it might've been for commissioners and boards, or I can't remember exactly. It might've been open to everyone. I think Faith had noticed it or this whoever. I don't remember when Faith started. The city noticed it for everyone. I think we should do that again. I think we should also take a look at the policy handbook and see if there's any tweaks we need to make based on this letter as a place to start. I think that could wait probably till we're done with the strategic plan conversations, just because we can only do so many work sessions at a time. But also consider like board reports. It's a pretty standard thing for a lot of councils and commissioners and we're not really utilizing the written report the way that we could be to stay in the loop. Not everything has to be a public presentation. It could just be, you know, a one pager or a two pager, an update on what the boards are doing. If that's something we want to standardize. That's what I would say about that.
So can I provide a couple bits of information on that? Just so you, when you're considering it, you know where we're at. If you look at page 168 of the agenda or 27 of the board policy handbook, that is where the reporting requirements are. So there already are reporting requirements for the boards. And you, you'll see that those are there. I also would encourage, encourage all the commissioners to just follow along through the minutes and at least review the agendas of the different boards. They're all published out there on our website. You can certainly just pull them up and see what the different boards are, are reviewing. That's an easy way if you want to, you know, monthly or whatever, just take a, take a peek at what the boards are doing. And then as a bit of information, our next training for commissioners and boards with Dan Clark is scheduled for 12th of January. So Dan will be here on the 12th of January and that will be open to all. It's scheduled for the new commissioners, but it's open to all current commissioners and board members that would like some training.
Can we just notice it? For all the, for all the boards and the commission?
We certainly will. As it gets closer, we'll send out an invite to everybody and there will be a a notice for all the boards and commissioners. So we don't have to worry about it before them show up.
And you said it's January 12th?
It is January 12th in the evening at five to eight.
And is that going to be available via Zoom?
Right now it is not. Dan does not have that capability. It is going to be in city hall for right now.
But city hall, you're in right now and you're zooming.
Yeah, but I'm just in my office. We don't have a, a large area that we could zoom from.
But you could zoom from city hall and everybody else could join remotely if it increases capacity?
We could do that depending on how many people sign up.
So is that, is that one year? I mean, maybe I'm wondering if one year is often enough for board updates. Especially for the boards that have no commissioner that meet with city staff regularly. So the commission is not kept up to date as timely as city staff is. That's what I'm thinking about Chair Hoagland. I don't know if that, the code prohibits us from requesting board reports more often. Cause it's only once a year, direct communication with some boards then.
I would agree. I think more frequent. It doesn't have to be highly, you know, intensive as far as time. But a synopsis of decisions of you know, projects, proposing projects so that the, we have kind of front loading or the commission has a, a front load to when decisions come to them or to, issues come to us. I think that's a great idea. Melissa, and I feel like we've discussed this over and over again throughout history. And it just doesn't happen. And I think it can be daunting for boards to have to come up with too too big of a document, but I feel like it would sure help in, in driving decisions down the road as well.
You know, Chair Hoagland, I think that like one potential solution for that, we have like, you know, this book here that we probably all have, the commissioners. It's got all these templates. Maybe we could have some sort of template so that the boards knew what we would expect in a report because we don't need like a five-page, single-spaced update. That's longer than some staff reports, which means it's probably too long. Cause you know, you don't need, I'm just thinking like there might be a way to simplify the process and make it feel less daunting with just some basic tools to set up a framework.
That could be in the handbook. You know, additions to the book from, that. I can't remember the whole title for that guide. But we could add that to it, Michael?
Could, or an option that wouldn't be maybe as onerous on the boards would just to be to include their minutes quarterly in the commission agenda. So you'd have three, three meetings worth of minutes every quarter. Which they're already producing. So that's, that's not extra work for them and it should cover what they're going over. If you think that's enough information.
I guess I'm curious if some boards are just recording and not putting minutes down. Because if the minutes are not detailed, like our minutes are not always detailed about the conversation that's happening, that would not be particularly useful to give us, do you know what I mean? Like the context of what's being talked about in meetings. So that's just kind of what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I would agree that the minutes are often very diverse.
But also we don't get to make those decisions tonight because it's just a discussion. So.
So any other feedback before we finish up? I think we'll, you know, we'll be in communication on more on this, just, you know, Michael and I and other commissioners and, and/or board members. And move in that direction. I, you know, the only, the last thing I want to say on it, and if anyone else. I do think it's important and I'm going to just state it, how it, moving forward should not change the importance of what I read earlier and that in the bylaws of maintaining that communication. So I want to repeat it again. I think that when we lose this in this bylaw, I don't know where in all other places how it, how it applies to other boards, but maintaining communication with relevant Livingston and Park County committees, staff, residents, and pursuing opportunities to coordinate development, coordinate development, maintenance and funding of city and county parks and trails. That statement alone is why I like working with boards. I don't want to see that go away. Boards give, give back through hard work a lot to our, our commission and to our city. And I would hate for that, those communications and that kind of flexibility in the communications to go away and that we lose the importance of that. So that's my last statement on it. Anyone else before we move on?
Yeah, Madam Chair. This letter came about obviously because we've had some problems with one or, or more boards or board members and acting out of their capacity and it should, I, I look at this as kind of a broad stroke. Obviously, you know, we have bylaws for a reason and, you know, on discouraged communication with an asterisk, follow your bylaws unless they're illegal. So I just don't want to make too, put too fine of a point on, on our discouraged communications and stuff. This is just a, it's general. I know people may perhaps took it, would have taken it the wrong way. I can understand how they might've and stuff like that, but let's look at this with a, with a broad stroke and and yeah, there's obviously some areas where we need to tighten it up. But yeah, it, it's it's broad, it's general. And that's the way I, I, I'm looking at this. And each board is unique. Historic preservation board for, for what it's worth, their bylaws don't even want us, for some reason, no city commissioner is on that board or represents that. So it's all up to the bylaws and stuff like that. So. It's all up to the bylaws and stuff like that, so. I hate to get, you know, too bogged down in, in a lot of this, but, but there is room for improvement, so thank you. I yield.
Chair Hoagland.
Go ahead, Melissa.
I have one other thing that's on my mind because I'm taking this course right now through local government. On this new edition of our handbook. And I'm reflecting on ex parte communications by council members. That was one of the sections that was discussed. I think that's something that we should really work out what that means and what it doesn't mean. Because this, this book talks about quasi judicial, quasi judicial decisions. That does not roll off the tongue easily, that phrase, but. And governing bodies. And I think at the beginning, someone, I don't remember if it was Michael or Courtney, it was, I think it was Michael, talking about how. Our boards are not governing bodies and they're not making decisions with authority that all of our boards. The Board of Adjustments was the only one, but now the commission has that. So it's just the commission that is the. Quasi judicial decision makers. So I think that's something to work out too. What does ex parte communication mean and where does it apply and not apply? And I still think that open meeting law is valuable for our boards regardless of ex parte. Applies to them or not. And I do think there's value in. Tracking that information. But I just want to be clear and not. Mix causes, so to speak, since this is, this section is talking about council members is where ex parte. And when I looked in the section on boards and committees and citizen groups, it doesn't talk about that, so. Just another thing to consider to really work out the details, I think. Otherwise it would making it look like they're a judicial body when they're not by talking about ex parte.
Thanks, Melissa. Okay, anyone else? Any other commissioners? Okay. All right, let's move on. Has some work to do, but we're not going to do it tonight. All right, moving on, Michael.
If that's city manager comments, then I've already given to you. That was the, they'll let you know about the Dan Clark training, so that's great. And we have both of the new commissioners scheduled for now already, which was the intent. But everybody, you're welcome and we will get more information as we go forward. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioners, Melissa.
I just want to say thank you for setting up the meeting with Dan Clark and being proactive about that. I would love to know what his, what the Zoom capabilities are, if he can do it from, you know, one of the offices. In City Hall or something, just for maximum board participation, since. I believe we have board members, many board members with small children. And five to eight is a difficult time for people with small children, or it can be. And if that means that they can attend and get more information and be more effective board members, I would like, I would like to see that happen. Will you be able to give us feedback at the, in the next month or so on? That topic, Michael?
I'll have to talk to Dan, but I'm, yeah, I'm sure four to six weeks we should know something.
Thanks, that'd be great. I know he's busy. Everybody's busy, so trying to be realistic with expectations. The other thing I want to do is I, I have seen the emails regarding. I'm shifting gears about Yellowstone Bend Citizen Council and their request. I think that. It would be wonderful. To have the topic on an agenda so we can have a dialogue and a discussion about it as a commission. And that's the only way we get to do it is if we notice it. And so I'm going to make a motion that. We have the Yellowstone Bend Citizen Council request that was stated previously by Lauren. On the December first agenda. And I am looking for a second.
Yeah, I'll second too. If we can get that on the next agenda, that would be great.
Thank you so much. That is all I have tonight. Thanks, everybody. What would I like for the item? The Yellowstone Bend Citizens Council request for ARPA funds that was stated in a previous email.
So just the request or do you want the city response or?
Yep, I think that all of it, I think you're, if you have a staff report on it, I think that's great to include as well. Their request, your staff report, I think that'd be great, just so we have all the information we need going into a meeting. Do you need anything else? Any other clarification?
Make sure that we had what you needed.
Yeah, I think that both things are great. I think whenever we have a staff report, it's helpful. I'm a big fan of staff reports. If the staff has. If the staff has an opinion on something, it's great to be able to read it in advance and have time to go over and ask questions and things like that. So I think that'd be great. Thank you. Yeah, thanks, everybody for a good discussion tonight. It's always good to. Have conversation in the action items about different issues, so thank you.
We don't always get to banter. Who's next? Warren.
I just want to wish everybody. An excellent Thanksgiving. A healthy, sociable one. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Mel.
Good to see everybody and looking forward to seeing you in person sometime. There's a lot of good stuff there. But I think we're. We're headed in the right direction and in good topics, so I appreciate that. I yield.
Thank you, Mel. Quentin.
Yeah, just briefly, I just want to give a shout out to the Livingston Business Improvement District. For decorating downtown. It's looking good and come along for the holidays. I also want to congratulate Carriatory on their success, suc- successful election. To the city commission and I really look forward to working with them. It's going to be a continuation of a, a great commission that we have now. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin. And the one thing, I know there's an event or two coming up. Celebrations, I think there's the community Thanksgiving dinner, which. Is they're giving out boxes, if I recall, and if anyone has more information, they're doing community boxes for families. Through the Food Resource Center. There are, there's also coming up the Christmas stroll and there is another event. And I was trying to find the dates on this, but there's the event of, they're also going to have a whole event by the depot, the depot center event. With the tree lighting. And aren't those both on the same night? Could anyone help me with that? Is that the same night? No. No comment? No one knows?
I don't remember. I don't remember.
The, the light up Livingston is on eleven December.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Thank you. I knew it was not quite right, but so one's on the third and the other one's the following week. And just to, you know, me and giving a little feedback on people being nice, it sounds like that got a little heated. Instead of being a great celebration of support for each. We can have more than one event and be happy. I'm always blown away by conflicts that come out of great things. When it should be about great things and not conflict, so. Great things coming up in our community. COVID hopefully is on the downside. Kind of getting better across the state in little places, not everywhere. But. You know. Could be a really great year for us and for. The world, hopefully, so. On that, that's all I have. Two more meetings to go. Who would like to propose adjournment?
So moved.
Well, it's always fun. Second by Warren, thank you. All in favor? This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at eight seventeen. Have a good night.
Night, everyone.